September tenth, twenty twenty four. Let me turn my phone to do not disturb. Encourage everybody else to do that since I just got a indication that I haven't done that. Sorry. I have asked our departing council member, Chris Keith, if she would leave us in a place.
That would be delayed.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which is hands. One nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, good catch. Wow.
Yeah, no kidding.
Thanks for having there.
Want to just end this? Thought it was coffee.
What's been there?
I know you want some, right?
I would have taken over your.
If, if, if everybody is firmly planted, we'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
I agree this for you.
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Ronnie? Stupin?
Here.
All right, and, and just for a public notice, our, our, our council president, Ronnie is not feeling well today and she decided not to share whatever does she has with the rest of us. So she was able to, she was able to, she's trying to join right now and was having some issues.
I'm on.
But she was able, oh, thank you. She was able to join the working sessions today as those are not restricted by charter. She's on tonight remotely, but she is basically a member of the audience. So she will not be participating in discussion at the table or in, in voting. But we are glad that she's, she's made the time to be here. So thank you for that and we hope you get feeling better soon.
Thanks.
I'll, this time I'll entertain a motion to the, to adopt the agenda.
Take a motion to adopt the agenda as written. Oh, second.
All right, I have a motion from council member Stupin, a second from council member Daniels. The, the only suggestion that I'd like to make, and I don't know that we need, necessarily need to formalize it, but we have two agenda items, nine B and nine C, that are basically a public hearing. And I'm going to reverse those two so that we have a little bit of a discussion of it before we open it up for the public hearing. It's always nice for the public to know what it is that's open for discussion. So I'd like to make that change if, if there's no objections.
Good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I guess I'm, I can make a motion, I just don't vote. I, I move to agenda to, to make that amendment.
I.
Actually, it's just, it's just kind of inappropriate, so let's just as, as amended. We'll give it that.
Yeah.
All right, any other further discussion?
Nope.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Here.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right, five, the motion passes, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of November twenty sixth.
I move to approve the minutes of November twenty sixth as written. Second.
Motion from council member Conley, a second by council member Daniels, discussion. Hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Five, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion on warrants payable.
I move to approve warrants payable on the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eighty six cents.
And do you have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from council member Keith, a second from council member Stupin. Would you like to take a moment and explain that?
I do have a few comments on this. This is a kind of a small amount for us, only four hundred thousand. So just wanted to go over some of the bigger ticket items. We had forty one thousand, roughly, I'm giving you rough numbers, payment for the CCE Special Improvement District payment, fifty six thousand to Republic Services, which is our biggest line item, forty one thousand for bond payment for water, thirteen thousand for our short term rental software, thirty thousand for Hagan Water Project, forty nine thousand for pool bond payment, seventeen thousand for interest on a sewer bond, twenty nine thousand for the Black Mountain Software, and fifty three thousand to Great Western Engineering. So that took up a little over three hundred, about three hundred and ninety thousand. So a lot of big ticket items this week.
Any other questions from the rest of council?
And, and thank you for, Doug, for signing warrants with me today.
Sure. All right, hearing no other discussion, let's go ahead and get a vote.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. For, for mayor's comments and reports, I would like to start out by thanking Chris for, for her years on council. This is her last official meeting. I have very much appreciated her voice and her input on council. It is, it is very nice to have discussions amongst people that don't always bring the same viewpoints and, and have the same conclusions. And, and we have a group of people that have all differing viewpoints and I very much appreciated those different inputs and at the same time, the, the civil and professional manner that we've been able to have conversations and discussions at the table. So thank you very, very much for being a part of that. I, I look, I look forward to your replacement being here as well and that tradition being carried on. So, but anyway, thank you. I, I appreciate it very much. Um, the other is a secondary thank you to, to all of you and to council, to council president Ronnie, who's not here, in your handling of the meeting two weeks ago. In, in my absence, it was very nice to get away and go to the Arctic Circle and get rained and snowed and frozen and beautiful and wonderful. And, and quite frankly, be very comfortable that things were, were going, had, had zero apprehensions about how things were going back at home. And that doesn't mean I didn't get some emails and respond to some emails and take care of some business from there. But, but it was because I happened to be there when it went being, it was not a, a concern or an apprehension from that. So thank you. As far as updates for council and the community, first off, just acknowledge that there was a, a failure to pick up trash on the west bench yesterday. We reached out to them this morning, they sent out an extra driver. My understanding is they still did not get through all of it today. So there's some of that, that if you're impacted and you're on that, if you have property managers in the audience, just leave those trashcans out until tomorrow. I anticipate they'll, they'll be hit fairly early tomorrow. Like, I know for instance, the street I'm on, one site got done and the other site did not. And so, and that's just the nature. We will be going into those contract negotiations as, as we start the new year. And, and one of the, the notes that has been made is we can, you know, talk about penalty clauses or, or some other things. Historically, when I was on council and we, we put this out to bid, we didn't have a lot of real competitive choices. So we, we have to, we have to go into those discussions with tempered expectations. But at the same time, I think it's fair to, to, to ask for, for some follow through. When we reached out today, they notified us that they had notified all of the impacted users via their automated system. And we questioned how they did that if we hadn't provided them any phone numbers. But we'll have a, we'll have a follow up conversation on that, so. Um, next Monday, the sixteenth, at five thirty at the senior center, there is going to be a public hearing on the Brewery Hill Trail. This is a grant that we are putting in for. We have, we've, we've, we started out in January, we reached out, one of the first calls I made was to NDOT about the possibility of, of putting a pedestrian path along the side of that hill. And they've been very helpful in working with us and, and have even offered that there's a grant available that will pay for, for the majority of that. And so we've put together some money and one of the checkboxes on that is that we're going to have a public hearing. They're going to come and present, Great West did, we commissioned Great West to, to prepare that application for us and also to do some engineering studies. There's, there's a, a couple of, of presentations of, I've heard tale of, of the draft copies and stuff that, that I anticipate I will have in my box by tomorrow. But anyway, that's five thirty, next Monday, sixteenth, senior center. And we welcome the public. There are a couple of homeowners directly in the lines of the path that I am going to personally reach out and, and make sure to make contact with so that they are aware to, to come participate. Because part of it is going to be buying easements on adjacent properties and stuff will be part of that process. It probably needs to be addressed. Any questions on that?
I'm planning on coming.
Okay, whatever. Yeah. Tomorrow, the, tomorrow night is the planning board. The, the main items that will be of interest to the public is the growth policy is going to be on the agenda and it is the, the goal and hope that we'll be able to finish that. If we are able to, we may move into the downtown master plan. And as quickly as we have, and, and if we do, we'll basically get that, that initial draft of what the master plan is, that's the, the working draft, and we will get that posted to the public website as, as soon as we have that. There were some initial comments made from the planning board folks. And so it's just a matter of getting that document, but we anticipate that going up. But for those who are interested, those, that is five thirty to seven thirty. They do a pretty good job of holding those to two hours just because there's, there's a lot of work and it will never be done. But for those who are interested, that's tomorrow night and those are the second and fourth Wednesdays. Usually those align with the second, fourth Tuesdays, but not always, but this week they do. Public works update, I just want to compliment Mike and his team. They did a fantastic job of getting out and doing some snow cleanup prior to the stroll. They also went through, we, we had a request as far as several lights that were out. They went through and got the streetlights all straightened out. You may notice they're all pointing the same direction now, getting the bulbs. And it turned out there was a lot of those bolts and stuff that with the winds and everything, we have it just kind of loosened up. So while they were at, they were also working on outlets and stuff that the Christmas decorations were into. And, and there's still a couple of lingering spots that they are, are working on, but they were able to get most of it done for the stroll. And it was, I, I received a lot of positive feedback from the community on that. Also from the public works, there's been a conversation as we've been doing our stormwater about getting the stormwater that is collected on Broadway through those atrocious corners, but at least getting it into our stormwater system rather than being part of the sanitary sewer. When we first approached NDOT, they did not have an interest in it. We have been persistent and there's now a conversation going on that sounds very, very likely that they're going to pick up the cost for helping us redirect that into our recently completed or more completed stormwater system. We did receive from the FAA a response to the master plan. The master plan for the airport is a reiterative process that goes FAA back to the, to the firm that we've hired to do that and it goes around and around and around. And we received a, a letter from them stating that they did not foresee Red Lodge being adopted into what's called the AIP, the Airport's Improvement Plan. And so we have a follow up meeting, I have a follow up meeting. I will be meeting with Commissioner Bullock and the, the firm that prepared it and with the FAA to basically get their guidance on what the next steps are. The concern is they spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that's, that's federal money that's collected. Most of that money comes from the taxes on, on aviation fuel throughout the country and they turn that around and put that back into airports. But what had happened is we had gone to the state, the airport board had gone to the state and asked for, for the money that, that board provides to the state to distribute. And the state said, don't come ask us for money if you haven't gone and asked the Fed for money first. Went and asked the Fed, the Fed said, you need to do this process of a master plan. That process has started. They paid for it, but what we're going to do is basically go nail down an understanding of, now that you guys are saying the answer is going to be no, what do we need to do to fulfill our obligations that were met as part of starting this master program? So, so we'll go find out, do they accept what was done to this point? Or is it something that still needs to be approved and adopted by city council? Which is my sneaking inclination that that's going to be there. So we'll find out what their requirements are, what they want to have us do. And then I'll bring that information back to council. And then council can make the determination, is, is the FAA minimums what we want to do? Or do we want to have some additional conversations? There's, there's been some public feedback about if we adopt a master plan and become part of this AIP, there could be more public input. I don't know how that, that changes given that they, de facto, have given us the answer is no. But ultimately, that will be council's decision. And if council decides we want to have some additional hearings, particularly if we need to take particular action on it, I defer completely to council on whatever we want to do on that. Council member Keith.
So when you say that they, they do not foresee Red Lodge being adopted, does that mean that they are not going to help fund like a new runway?
Yeah, that, that, and that's the extent of what it means. They, they, they do not want to shut down the airport, they don't want to do anything else, they're not going to stand in the way. They're just not going to spend money to do the major improvements.
And that was, that was something they anticipated happening though, the airport.
It, 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 well, when we, when we, when I say we, I have been going to those meetings for years.
Last year.
Yeah.
That's when I was.
Well, and even before that, so, so the guidance from the FAA, as I understand it, was yes, do that, but to do that, you need to start this master, that you need to, you need to do an updated and current master plan, which we'll pay for, but you need to do that. And then at this point, what they've done is said, we've looked at the numbers in the master plan and based on specifically the runway length, we don't think it's one of those where we're going to direct those funds to. And, and part of the question for them on Thursday is, those numbers aren't any different now than, you know, those numbers that you're using as a guidance and a reference point have existed for twenty or thirty years. Why did you start us down this path if your de facto answer was going to be, no, we're not going to pay for it? There's still a benefit to the city and to the community and to the, because now we can go back to the state and, and the airport board has gone back to the state to ask for some of the money that's available there, smaller scale, much smaller scale. And when they say, have you gone to the feds? We can say, yes, we did, the answer was no, so now we're coming back to you, which is what you told us to do.
Okay.
So that, that, that request has already been put in. Also, there was a, a private grant we've discussed previously that actually addresses the, the maintenance of the, of the runway for, for many years to come. And, 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 but, but like I said, there's, this is an ongoing and, and continual thing. This is a, this is a, an important part of our infrastructure, so how do we do it? You know, one of the things they've said is the same thing they said back two thousand, right before I got here in two thousand and five. I kind of got here on the tail ends of, if you guys want to move the airport someplace else, we'll happily pay for that. You just have to figure out where that someplace else is. And I think we have the same challenges and issues now about where that can be there. But, but the difference is between now and then and now, they said, reapply for where you are. And so we said, okay, and then they said, no. So there was a, there was a shock, but, uh, you know, so I think that factors into, that factors into a couple of discussions we're having. I don't think it factors into the renewal of the multi, of the interlocal agreement. I think that the fact of the matter is, is that we're all paying a, a city one percent for the maintenance of the airport and we're paying a county one percent. If we don't have an interlocal agreement, the difference is, is that county's one percent all now goes to Bridger rather than going to our airport. It's not that we don't pay it. So I think that airport agreement was, but, but we need to understand what the FAA is doing so that we factor that into our agreement as well.
Thank you.
Did I, did I anticipate you get all the questions?
Yep.
Thank you. And, and even though you're gone, you're, you're welcome to please continue to come and, and discuss and offer input.
I will, I'm still being there.
All right, any other questions on, on, on that one? Like I said, it's, it's kind of a lot of talk for something that hasn't happened yet. But like I said, hopefully we'll get some updated information. Just help explain your letter to us at this point. Rocky Fork Inn property, I don't think this is a duplicate because it was a very, very recent, and I apologize if it is, but we basically got their permission to go ahead and submit for a budget amendment now, which they had told us not to do and we were already doing the work in the background to prepare for that. And they've just told us now to do that. So I have not yet had a follow up meeting on this week, but before I left, the, the team is working on getting those numbers done to basically submit a budget amendment and, and get that done. Their, meaning the state's assessment was that nobody was going to come out and work on that property during the winter. I don't know that that's necessarily a true statement. I think there's a lot of construction companies that are looking for opportunities to go out and earn income during those cold harsh months and they're inside of an enclosed heated cabin, they don't care what it's doing outside. So anyway, we will continue to move forward with that as quickly as possible. Just a heads up, some things that are not on the council part of the agenda, but will be up for action in the, in the first meeting in January, is we did receive a bid for the land lease, RFP. And I've opened those and we've made a decision on, on to award that. It'll basically be to the same owners that have been there, but in keeping with what we've done, I need authorization from council to sign that lease. You guys have already all seen that lease, so it'll just be an execute, you know, it'll be a filled in the blank copy of that lease. So that'll be an action item at the next meeting. Also, we have some board positions. I've got a parks board position that is expiring this month. I've got two cemetery board reappointments. And in those cases, those are all reappointments. And I've received the letters and, and I'm happy with those. And so I'll be, I'll, making those reappointments and asking for council's blessing on those. But I'm just, I'm, I'm calling it out so they'll be on the agenda next time and we'll include all of those letters in the packet so that you see them. That's what I've done and cut off on in the two days I've been back. Are there any questions or things that I, that I missed that?
I think that's.
Okay. All right, hearing none, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. There's actually going to be two public comment periods. There's going to be one now, there'll be one at the end of the meeting. Traditionally, this first one is, is reserved for items on the agenda. Having said that, if we have items that, that, that seem likely that the public is going to want to comment at the time, we will have public hearings within. In fact, today we'll have that on one of the resolutions, it's a public hearing. So there will be additional public hearing opportunities on a per item basis. But with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and I'll look first to the room. Anybody who's interested, if you'll stand up to the podium in your outside voices, in your outside voices, there's the list over there. I'm not hearing it, but for those that are online, address your comments to, to me, please, and start with your name. And then I'll do a three minute timer. So if you're online, like comment, go ahead and start by turning on a camera. I do see a camera from, from Angie. Angie, if you would like to speak, you have the floor.
I'll unmute myself too. And let me bring up the letter I want to read. So Angie Hazel sore, city resident. I'd like to comment on ordinance number nine, six, three. It looks like you'll be discussing that today. The amend, first amended to regulate short term rentals within city limits. My biggest concerns about that are the new definitions of the types of short term rentals that will be exempt. In my opinion, it looks like it's just creating some loopholes to allow more short term rentals to be active in the community, but not to be included in the overall count. In the current version, one example that I will bring up, in the current version of ordinance nine, six, three, the definition for owner occupied is a short term rental of one or more bedrooms in a dwelling that is legally identified as the property owner's primary residence and the owner is occupying the primary residence for the entire rental period. And to me, that sounds like someone that's clearly a person who lives in town the majority of their time. I won't read the amended one, I think you'll be discussing it and you can compare for yourselves what you think. But the new definition really broadens the scope of the owner occupied type to the extent that it seems like the same definition as what's in the new general short term definition type. But a home being rented for six months, whether sequential days or not, I think will have a different impact on the neighborhood than one where the property owner is present during the rental periods. There were two others, onsite managed short term rental. I'm just not sure why that one should be exempt. The other one was a temporary short term rental, which essentially states if it's only rented for a short amount of time, like say Christmas or just the Fourth of July, that it should be exempt from being considered counted in the short term rental numbers. One thing about that is it does not state what the maximum of days that it could be rented. And I think that should be included so that if that one does become amended. But in my thinking, it doesn't seem like it should, it's, I think it should still be considered a non exempt short term rental. Let's see, in the fourth, whereas of both.
Can you wrap that?
In the, um, both ordinances, it says that Red Lodge is proactively seeking to mitigate impacts of short term rentals. Trying to be quick here, I feel like the way it's set up now is that because the, when it reaches a twenty percent, they'll be, they'll have a full count, they can look at the impacts, it can be evaluated. If everything's fine, they'll increase that threshold. If there's any problems, things can be discussed and worked out at that point. But I kind of feel like the way it is currently is going to work pretty well and not cause extra hoops for people to jump through or for the city to look for. Thanks. And I'll wait to hear your question to see if things are explained more clearly.
And, and, and I will add just by, by way of regular information, you already called it out that this is just in the kind of the council discussion spot. I think best estimates are that this is actually going to continue to be discussed and it'll be in February probably before there's an action. But thank you for your comments and please do continue to come and, and, and also to follow up with your council members and offer that feedback. And if you want to send your letters in, we're happy to include those within correspondence and, and put those out with the packets as well. Thank you, Angie. Anyone else online? I'm looking for cameras or coming off mute. Going once, going twice. All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close out that portion of public comments. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding resolution three, six, seven, four.
I move to approve resolution three. Did you want to?
Well, I missed, like you declared the public hearing and then I thought you were going to come to the room, but you went on.
Oh, oh, I went to the room first, I'm sorry, did I?
I'm sorry.
Did you, did you want to comment? I'm happy to reopen that.
I would like to on pub, on the public hearing, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and do you want to have it at the first one or just at the second one? Because I'm fine either way.
I, I can go either way.
And, and, do, do you want to have your comments before we do all our business or, or are you good at the end?
I'm good at the end.
All right, thank you. Don't. Don't, yeah, yeah, I, I, I thought I went to the room first and you just didn't look.
I misunderstood. Thank you.
Visions of sugarplums, so, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll come back and, and that's okay. Don't, don't let me, don't let me miss you, pass it for, for coming up. Yeah. You know what I was trying to say there?
Yep.
All right. I will entertain a motion for resolution number three, six, seven, four, and I think I had one from council member.
Conley.
Conley and a second from?
I'll second.
A second from council member Tupin. All right. Discussion.
I'm happy to make a little introduction again from, so this is a resolution thirty, six, seventy-four, authorizing the city of Red Lodge to adopt the CPACE program. CPACE stands for commercial property access capital enhancement and it's a Montana financing program that's relatively new that began in 2022, offering businesses an affordable way to install energy efficient upgrades for renewable energy development to their buildings. It covers projects from solar panels to high efficiency HVAC systems and is available to businesses only, like farms and ranches, commercial office buildings, nonprofits and multi-tenant buildings of four units or more. So in a, in a state that has few financial incentives for clean energy, this is a great opportunity. And if anybody wants to know more, we will have something in the packet. I did hear back from Carolyn. We will have her presentation in next month's packet. But you can also, for those of you who are not familiar with the program, you can look at lastbestpace.org.
Yeah. There was, there was a presentation that was given to the admin and finance a couple of cycles ago and then a presentation was given at council. We've asked for and we just received word that we are getting a copy of that, so that will be included in next month's packet. There's not really a lot of downsides or risks per se. The primary reason we want to make sure we get that included in the packet is just so that businesses are aware that there's a new mechanism available and that has some of that information. So, so we'll still, even though there's been public presentations on it to, to now, we want to make sure we get a hard copy out so that there's a reference available to, to the businesses. It's not available to municipalities, unfortunately. Municipalities have to sign off and, and say we'll back it. And then what happens is it's basically a, the, the financing to do that is done through this program and then it's paid for out of the taxes and it follows the property. So it's a, they, they, they've kind of thought of how things could go south and address that, so.
And I would also like to point out that Tom Keyda is online at the ready. If anybody does have any further questions, I know we've had a couple of presentations already, so hopefully everybody's got their questions. They had gotten it. Very, very thorough.
Any further discussion at the table?
The only question I have is if there will be somewhere on the city website where there'll be information about this resource. I know that there were some questions at the business alliance of what this is and how it works and I think there was some general interest, so that's great. So just even if it's just a quick little blurb and a, a something searchable, I don't know.
That's, that's what we've got. We've gotten the presentation. So as soon as we get it, then we'll post it. I'll also be sending it over to R O B A and they can, they, they're going to forge it on from there.
There's also a link that we could probably put on there and maybe it's in the presentation on e-commerce or on commerce. They do have like a place where you can go and.
Excellent, yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. That's, that's annoying.
I had, I had questions, you know, that Red Lodge's representative just serviced the assessments, which I think we discussed it isn't going to be that much work. And then I read further down, city of Red Lodge will maintain and continue the assessment and enforce the assessment lien for the benefit of the lender in the, in the event of default by owner. We're going to be the enforcer of the, of the lien, exactly how much work.
I think it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be similar to property taxes because it's going to be on a property tax bill. So as the county enforces those non-payments, that will be part of it.
So, so if I can translate or retell me if I understand, so like right now, if somebody has a tall grass and, and we, it's going to be on their taxes, we have to process some paperwork to get to the county to do that.
Right.
And, and I think that's what, that's what our role would be. When, when we had staff in and kind of they inquired and asked about it, it seemed like it was a pretty minimal. I'm not sure when, when it goes default. Maybe this is a question Tom could, could address because I think if it's default, that's strictly the counties dealing with it at that point. I'm not sure what the city's role in that would be.
Well, it is listed as under the city to enforce the assessment lien. And I was kind of wondering on that, on that wording. The only other thing that I noticed in here is section six says that there will be a report on December 11th, which is tomorrow. So there's going to be a report tomorrow.
That's the date of December 10th.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Good catch.
And January 14th is okay. So, yeah, my, my question really was, was of course this date and how much work we're asking the city to, to enforce a lien.
And then, so my next question is, does that mean that we need to make this be a public hearing as well? And if so, does it count if it didn't state that it was a public hearing on the agenda? It just has a resolution of action.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Tom, this is, this is a, a, a resolution your group put together. Do you have anything you can add to this, kind of address the questions that have come up?
I'll admit, uh, thanks for having me. I'll admit that I, that's probably a little beyond my knowledge base about the, the lien question. I know it's been addressed by Caroline a couple times and my understanding was generally that it was pretty rare that it ever had to be worried about, but that the, the, either the municipality or the county and the state agency would, would sort it out. But honestly, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer it very in depth.
My, my guess is that if there's some role of the, if what we have to do is if they, I, I, it's like I said, if we do tall grasses, we do some paperwork to put it there. But this, I, my understanding is just that we do it once upfront to say, put this on it, but then.
And it's a lien because it's a loan. So it's, there's already a lien in the, uh.
Can you, can you tell me which number that is you're looking at? I'm sorry.
It's number four and it's basically next to the last sentence. The lender contract will provide that the city of Red Lodge will maintain and continue the assessment for the benefit of such lenders and enforce the assessment lien for the benefit of a lender in the event of a default by owner.
And I think that's just the, from the discussions we had, that's just that initial paperwork that says that's the one kind of thing that says that's a.
Kind of a boilerplate resolution and it's, it's usually pushed through from the county level who are the ones that.
That would do a.
That would do the taxes, so maybe it's.
I don't know how we enforce a lien.
Yeah. I see what you're saying.
What is council's inclination on how they would like to handle the questions at hand? At a minimum, I, I hear one amendment that would need to be made, but, but I also have some questions on that, the public hearing comment.
Yeah, I don't see that it's a public hearing issue. I mean, allowing that program to go through.
I think it's that it has to be posted at the public hearing.
We, yeah, but I, this is a resolution, so we don't have to have a public hearing. Number one. Number two, the city isn't doing anything but approving the CPACE program, which is required for our commercial.
We could just remove that sentence. We aren't really doing enforcement. It's going to be the county that does that. And I think, like I said, I think this is a boilerplate.
Correct.
That the counties are usually the ones that they are trying to get this passed through because then it's all the municipalities within the county that are going to benefit.
Well, that's why I was kind of thinking that, that it had really nothing to do with us. Not only that, we're not the one putting a lien on their property for unpaid taxes.
Yeah.
Because the assessment is through their taxes.
Tom, question for you. The, do we have to have this sentence in this resolution? Can we remove it?
That one I also can't answer, I'm afraid, but I'm sure we can have some clarification from Caroline as quick as possible.
I, I, I'm seeing.
She said that she's in anaconda tonight at their council meeting. I, I would just say that we take that sentence out because we don't have anything to do with enforcement. No, there's the enforcement right now in there.
Here's my, my question for Tom. Is this, is this time bound? Does this, I know one of the other actions we have on the agenda is time bound. Is this time bound or would be tabling this and getting those two questions answered in more detail by?
The first of the year.
By, by next year. Because it's fun to say it that way. By our next meeting, would that be an acceptable option?
I think so, yes. I think that would be fine.
I'd like to get clarification before voting on it.
Thanks for, thanks for saying that, Sandy.
I would move to table this.
And have it as an action item.
I have a, I have a motion to table three, six, seven, four to January, we have the, the date, because we want to do this.
Fourteenth.
To January 14th. So I have a motion to table resolution three, six, seven, four to be taken up on January 14th.
I'll second.
Did I recapture your motion, property?
Beautifully.
And I, that was a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Tupin. Any further discussion on the motion to table? All right, let's just go ahead and do a vote on the motion.
Conley?
Yeah.
Danielle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And so that'll be moved to the next agenda and we will look to admin and finance to do the follow-up and get those questions answered on number four and on number six.
Do you want to carry this forward if you have the two potential changes?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. On that, I will entertain a motion for resolution number three, six, seven, five.
Would happen to.
We're, we're doing, we changed the order on those.
I'm moving to approve resolution number three, six, seven, five, authorizing the mayor to submit an application for the H P three, fifty-five project funding.
I second.
All right. So I have a motion from council member Keys, a second from council member Conley. What I'd like to do is just to introduce that and then after we introduce this and have discussion at the table, we will open it up to the floor because this is a, an official public hearing, which is a requirement for this particular funding source. The short version is House Bill three, fifty-five made some money available to individual municipalities. It is not a competitive grant. It is, this is money that's available, use it or lose it. It was one of those things that they presented as you have until Friday to do it and that Friday came and went a year ago and we kind of thought it was a missed opportunity until they reached out to us and said, hey, you have an upcoming deadline if you still do this. So maybe we thought their last, their, the date they gave us was a last year date and it was a this year date. But anyway, we've gone through, the, the previous administration had identified multiple different sources that tended to match the goals as outlined by House Bill three, fifty-five. And the one that the city has settled on is a city hall renovation, particularly electrical and insulation on the second floor. But at the second time, what we'll do is see how far $209,000 will go. Staff member Brian Hannah has been kind of overseeing this for us and has been doing the prep work and putting the prep work together that's included in the packet. He was able to make it today and, and present to admin and finance. However, scheduling conflicts precluded him from being, being able to be here tonight. So that's why I'm kind of explaining that and then I'll turn it over to Lonnie. Is there anything you want to add to that discussion?
Just to add that there is a match required for it, which will be coming out of the capital fund account that we have that you guys already.
Capital improvement.
Yeah. Capital improvement. Yep. So that's where the match that's required.
The 25% match for, for the public record.
So it's $50,000?
Plus a little change.
We just round it up when you get that high.
And there's a hundred thousand in the C I P fund, capital improvement.
And it's a.
And I believe Brian said that he was also going to pull a little bit out of the lien as well.
Some, yeah, some of the, some of the, basically the departments that are directly impacted by it, we're able to pull from those enterprise funds to do that as well. So, so the, the short version is we've identified the project. We feel comfortable that we can meet the match from existing budgeted funds and, and this is a rare opportunity. There's a lot of things that we, we, you know, we, we can't do a lot with city hall. Resort tax is not authorized to be used for that. Our, our primary property taxes are pretty much allocated on, on public safety with fire and police. So this is a, a nice opportunity to be able to take advantage of, to, to update a little bit of city hall.
And, and one perk too, just talking about the sustainability factor is the fact that with some of these improvements, it will save us money in heating, cooling, all of those types of things as well. Plus just bringing things up to code, I think is safe. Safe, it's safe.
Now, our experience, this list of, of the projects identified, is, is that going to go with this, you know, with the packet when you send it in?
Yes.
Well, I noticed that on the first paragraph, building currently holds office for the admin department, building department, city attorney, mayor, and planning department. Should it also mention that it is also the site for city court?
We can certainly add that to that.
I mean, the more we add.
Yeah, and that, that little blur thing there.
Isn't going to go?
No, there's like a, there's a whole application.
Okay, that's what, that's where I was going with.
This is more for public information.
Without of that onto the application, but we kind of.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we'll make it, no, relay that.
Or we could put down.
Yeah, we'll make it and relay it on if it does, if it does fit into the conversation.
Doesn't help, yeah. I think it's a great, great use of the funds.
All right. Other, other questions from the table before we go to the public hearing? All right. So at this point, what we'll do is we'll open a public hearing. This is specifically on resolution number three, six, seven, five. So that, this is just for that one item. I'll go ahead and open that. I'll look at the room. I get a positive, negative from the room, so I'll go online and see if there's any public comment online. If you can either turn on your camera first choice or alternatively come off mute. All right. Hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and check that box off as, as completed. Bring it back to the table. Any other conversations on resolution three, six, seven, five? Hearing done, let's go ahead and get a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yeah.
Danielle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Five, zero, the vote, or, yeah, the vote passes. All right. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number nine, six, nine. And if the motioner would please make sure to include first reading.
I move to approve ordinance number nine, six, nine. Municipal code, I don't know what that symbol, how you pronounce that. Six, one, four, reserved space, accessible parking, public hearing, first reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion from council member Keys, a second from council member Tupin. Who would like to comment on this at the table?
I, I had a question on B about the application and it said, application for space provided in subsections or of this section shall be filed with city court and shall be accompanied with the consent and writing of the occupant of the first floor of the building in front of which it is desired. Just the first floor, if it's a.
Just, how would you say it?
Accessible.
Accessible, I think it's implied that it.
That somebody on the second floor wouldn't be interested or wouldn't be eligible.
I mean, I find if we can make, we can make an amendment and remove the first floor and just say the occupants of the building.
Well, I was just thinking of the.
I was trying to think of the big building.
The big building is kitty corner from the market. They have elevators for the second floor.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
The, the sunrise. The, yep, the sunrise house.
I mean, the Pollard House elevators. There are a lot of elevators in town, but-
Yeah, not a lot, but there could be more.
Yeah.
That was a legacy, that was legacy writing that was in there.
Yep.
So I don't really barely caught that.
Is that legacy?
Yeah, I didn't put that in there, so I think-
First time I read it, so I was like, why is this the first floor?
Yeah, yeah. I was- I am totally okay with amending that.
We can, we can scratch that.
So it says, so, of the occupant of the building.
Or occupants.
Occupant of the building.
So can I get a formal motion to strike of the first floor?
I move to strike of the first floor.
In B?
I'll second. In section?
Section B. And that was my only comment on this particular ordinance. Although I did note that the city hall doesn't have any handicap parking. We have a lovely handicap-
Accessible parking.
Whatever the terminology is these days, we have a lovely accessible ramp, but no place for them to park. By the way.
Noted.
Is it on the side?
Because the ramp is right there.
There is one over here.
Two parking spots there, there's one right there, both of which would be pretty quick to, you know, to get to the ramp.
One of, one of the concerns, and I know the reason this came up before, because, because I know in parts of the conversation there was like thirty-minute parking, and just every spot that we set aside as that is no longer available for anything else.
I understand.
I am not aware that we have had a problem of not having a handicap parking spot at city hall.
Just because we haven't had a problem?
Well, or if, because there, the, the stuff that's only for city business is suitable for the needs, I don't know.
It would be for city business. Somebody wanted to attend one of our meetings or go in the office or-
We have, we have that parking available.
But not for someone who's handicapped. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, the handicap still goes. Blue curbs. Anyway, it's just something that I, I noted that we did not have. Yet, the county does have. The post office does have. I believe the courthouse does have.
Mhm, okay. So I'm making a, a, a side note, um, review blue curb for city hall. Um, but I don't think that pact was directly into this ordinance, correct?
No, no, but I, it was a, once I saw this, I thought, hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That was the only thing that I saw in here.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to amend, um, six, one, four, B, to drop of the first floor, is there any additional conversation?
And add an S on occupants, or-
And to make occupants plural, or, or that they have them for instance, so-
Yes, for instance, yeah.
Noted. Hear, good catch. Hearing, hearing no discussion, this will be a vote on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Conley?
Yeah.
Danielle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Five zero, the motion to amend passes, back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Other than the city is woefully inadequate because we don't have a blue curb.
They have a lovely ramp. At least we got that.
All right, hearing, um, actually, um, this being an, an, an action item and an ordinance, um, I will go ahead and open it up if there's any public comment that would like to be made, I'll start in the room. See if there's anybody in the room. Go online and see if there's any comments that'd like to be added to that. Twice, going three times. Hearing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the table. Last chance for discussion at the table before we go to a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, motion passes by zero on first reading, we'll see it again in January. And, uh, if somebody on the, I think it was an admin committee that had this. Um, if somebody would make sure that the, the version that makes the packet next week reflects those amendments in that, if somebody would-
I will send that out right now.
All right, thank you. Um, I believe that completes the, the work session portion of the meeting. Thank you, and so at this point, we will go to the council work session, this is listed as other council, um, business. Um, and, and just for the, the, the public's, uh, knowledge, I noticed we have a lot of new faces that we may not have seen before. Uh, this is basically, so there's a lot of activity that happens inside of, um, the individual standing committees throughout the day. Um, but as a matter of practice, those are pri- limit, pres- primarily limited to, uh, the three members on that committee. Um, the purpose of this is to bring those items to discussion for the full council so that all of the, the council members get that. Um, we have a practice of, of, almost always, whenever schedule permits and allows, uh, we bring things to, to the full council for discussion to basically get buy-off to make sure that the, the, the action item section of, of the week is, is boring. Um, and so this is where, uh, full council gets to weigh in. Um, and then we can also take some public comment, uh, as needed on each of those items as well. Um, so, uh, this is, uh, yeah, so that's, that's what this is, this is not up for action, and it is not necessarily that everything in the council business section is automatically going to be on in two weeks, but we try to make sure that it comes to at least one city council meeting prior to making it to the action item. So just a, a short explanation for those who may be joining us for the first time. With that, what let's do is we will go to public health and safety. And, uh, Council Chair Conley, would you like to give us an update of the goings-on in public health and safety?
Yeah, we've been really happy to- Steve Schrock has been able to join all of our meetings. Um, he brought us up to date that there is a grant application in, uh, asking for a school resource officer and for a detective, so there are two grant applications out there. Meanwhile, he's going to be putting an officer in the school from time to time just to get everyone kind of used to having an officer there, and they'll run different programs, um, with the kids. So that's kind of an interesting way to get it started. Um, and that's as time allows and, and all of that. Um, he did point out that Montana has the highest DUI rate in the US. Mostly because, you know, when someone, uh, gets pulled over for a DUI and it's their eleventh or twelfth DUI, they still don't go to jail because we don't have capacity. So, um, we have an issue. We spent quite a bit of time on the animal ordinance that is basically dog, and we wanted to make it dog and cat, basically your domestic animal. And want to include something about puppy mills and cat colonies, so we're just working on, on vergige on that to, to see where it might go. And I think that's, that's the gist of what we focused.
If, if I may add, and, 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 and please correct me if, if I capture this incorrectly, I think part of what we heard is that the school board, so you'll recall that we, the original discussions with the school board for a school resource officer was a seventy-five, twenty-five split between the school board and, and the city. Um, and that's what we built into our budget. Um, it's not just a grant they're going for, my understanding is they're actually going for a budget initiative to have a, a valid initiative to basically have a funded source for that seventy-five percent to send that to the voters.
The school board is.
Yeah, that, 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 so that'll be, uh, uh, basically a valid initiative to, to fund their seventy-five percent, which is good in that it addresses the long-term stuff, so. Um, as, as, as we see that come forth, um, uh, yeah, that'll be, that'll be good public discussion to have. And the city will still stand by on our part to, to come up for the twenty-five percent because, because that's during the summer when we could use the additional staff. It works out for both parties involved.
That was it?
Thank you. Any other questions for public health and safety before we move on to the next committee? All right, um, next we will move to the admin and finance committee. And, uh, that would normally be, uh, Council Chair Ronning, but I think Councilmember Keys, you're gonna lead that discussion tonight?
No, I'm not, no. I have been nominated.
All right.
She's not in that committee anymore. She is leading it. Thank you, Jody. So, uh, yeah, uh, essentially we're talking about some short-term rental ordinances, um, as well as registration ordinances and doing a short-term rental presentation. Uh, with my position, or my business that I own within the community, um, I do own a short-term rental and long-term rental property management company with my husband. Um, and, so I was asked to continue to join the admin and finance meetings specifically just so I can bring my expertise to the table as well as, uh, any perspectives that they may need. So, um, been pretty involved with helping through this whole piece and building out uh, some of the, the edits and cleanup that we've been working on. And then Jody did a wonderful job of creating the short-term rental presentation over the past year since we put in ordinance nine sixty-three. She did ask that, uh, I put that, or present that tonight, just because she is under the weather, so. I will do that now.
All right, so, um, where, is she already set up as a co-host so that she can share?
Correct, yep, I'm working on it right now. Okay, bear with me, y'all.
Need to make sure the wind's on.
That'll make my life so much easier, so I don't need to start from the beginning. All right, so, summer test, you have twenty twenty-four, short-term rental review. So, ordinance nine sixty-three, that was passed by Red Lodge City Council in August twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. Uh, this created a limit of no more than twenty percent of total residences are allowed to be short-term rentals within the city limits. Uh, it also created three categories of short-term rentals. Type one is owner occupied, uh, they are exempt from the limit. Type two is property managed short-term rentals, which they are allotted fifty-five percent of the limit. And type three, all other short-term rentals, so a general short-term rental, uh, managed by general public, allotted by forty-five percent of the limit. Uh, comparing twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, so in June, we asked the county for uh, the total residential units so we can come up with that twenty percent and what that limit will be. So in twenty twenty-three, we had eighteen hundred fifty-five residential units in city limits. Uh, we had a total amount of allowed registrations of three hundred and seventy-one. The total actual registrations we had was one ninety-seven. And ten point six percent of residential units were registered as FTRs. In twenty twenty-four, uh, number of residential units has gone up to nineteen hundred and ten. That is as of September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Because we get these from government or the county authorities, it's, it's, it's not always a quick turnaround to know what our total residences are, so that is why that is somewhat backdated. Uh, number of short-term rentals, so we had three hundred and eighty-two allowed. Our total registered, actual registered was one ninety-six, so that did go down. And now we are at a total of ten point two percent of residential units registered. So our percentage is actually down from the previous year. Uh, numbers of short-term rental by category, just so we can kind of understand that a little better. In twenty twenty-three, of a hundred and ninety-seven short-term rental registrations, type one had two, and a reminder that is owner occupied, uh, and they are exempt. Type two holds sixty-one, held sixty-one active registrations with a remaining amount of a hundred and forty-three registrations to that category. And then type three had a hundred and thirty-four active registrations with a remaining amount of thirty-three registrations still available in that category. In twenty twenty-four, that shifted, uh, so again, we had a hundred and ninety-six active short-term rental registrations. Still the same two homeowners, um, of that, of the owner occupied, had their registrations. Uh, then with type two, the property managed, um, registrations, there's seventy-nine active registrations with a remaining amount of a hundred and thirty-four registrations still available. Type three, which is the general, uh, holds a hundred and fifteen active registrations with a remaining amount of fifty-four registrations still available. So that one did drop where the property managed, uh, registrations did increase. Uh, this is a graph, beautiful graph, makes this really pretty, uh, very pretty. So just to kind of, uh, break that down, the yellow is from twenty twenty-three, the green is from twenty twenty-four, the gray is what is remaining for those years. Type one did not move, still the two right there, you can see them slightly. And then type two registrations, you'll see how in twenty twenty-three there was less, twenty twenty-four there was more. And in type three registrations, you'll see how there was more in twenty twenty-three and less in twenty twenty-four. Uh, so changes to FTRs, uh, how many FTRs did not renew this year? For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five, five type two, which is property managed, uh, did not renew this year. Sixteen type three did not renew this year for a total of twenty-one non-renewals. Uh, and then per city staff, at least seven of those non-renewing short-term rentals were converted to long-term rentals. Um, then how many new X, or new FTRs this year for twenty twenty-three? Uh, there was forty new total in the year. In twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, there was fifteen total new. Okay, so in twenty twenty-two, the city implemented a software called MiniRest for tracking FTRs in the community, and so this tracks, uh, making sure that everybody is registered, has gone through, done their paperwork, paid their taxes, et cetera. Um, as well as helps us track with hotlines, complaints, et cetera. Uh, how many, the software did end up bringing eighty-six short-term rentals into compliance with that software, and that resulted in a collected back tax of seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy and forty-three cents to our resort tax. A good number. Um, okay, so short-term re- business registration fees, those did go up, uh, after twenty, or in twenty twenty-three to two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, they used to be fifty dollars per registration, and then they did increase, uh, in twenty twenty-three, so you'll see a very substantial increase. But also the city is taking on a more substantial role in administration of FTRs. So again, managing that software that we have, dealing with onboarding questions, tracking all of these numbers, tracking complaints and issues while also tracking progress for a lot of these folks and lots of communication, the whole application process, as well as resort tax collections. Uh, hotline calls, so that is one of the features, is that there is a hotline for issues with short-term rentals. Uh, this is a tool for the community, if there's a complaint or an issue with one of your neighbors that may be a short-term rental, uh, you can call this number, and the complaints are investigated, validated to be accurate, and then followed up on by city staff, and then the emergency contacts of that short-term rental are notified so that they can essentially fix that solu- or make a solution for that problem. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, there was two total calls, both were trash complaints. And in twenty twenty-four, there were five total calls, two for fireworks, uh, two for occupancy slash number of guests, so just over, over the guest occupancy or too many people, and then one noise complaint. Uh, in terms of resort tax revenue, we'll see that in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three did a total of a hundred fifty thousand four hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents. In twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we did a hundred and seventy-three dollars, three hundred, or a hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and ninety-two and seventy-seven cents. And in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which obviously we are only through the third quarter, I guess it would be the first quarter. It's the first quarter of the fiscal year. Um, and that would be July through September. Um, that's sixty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, or seven hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty. So you can see that it's gone down a little bit unless these quarters are shifted, but I don't think so. So, uh, based off those numbers, that totally tracks for resort tax revenue. Um, I just think that we're going by actual fiscal year versus Red Lodge fiscal year, which is confusing because we like to start our fiscal year in July. Um, so, yeah, our numbers are down a little bit, uh, but also I think that was a, a pretty significant trend nationwide with short-term rentals as well as just the vacation industry. Uh, here's another lovely graph to show you those numbers. Again, you gotta love that first quarter, um, so that is something to keep in mind. So that is something to keep in mind. December is the third quarter. All right, so T-Bid fees, we wanted to include this as well. So T-Bid is the tourism business improvement district. It collects two dollars per night from hotels, motels, beds, breakfast, short-term rental companies that have three or more properties. So these funds go specifically into marketing Red Lodge, working very closely with the Chamber of Commerce. They also support with providing grants for local events, as well as, you know, some of this wayfinding signage, anything that's really going to help contribute to heads and beds in the marketing of Red Lodge as a destination. These are also made for distributing educational pamphlets, so for instance, the bare-toothed highway map, as well as some other things that we've partnered with the RTA, Leave No Trace efforts, et cetera. In the collections for two thousand twenty-three, just for short-term rentals, there's a substantial more collections from hotels, motels, et cetera. You have thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight in two thousand twenty-three, and for short-term rentals in two thousand twenty-four, you have fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. And that's just short-term? Yeah, that's just from the short-term rentals. And also important to note, that's also just from the short-term rental companies. Anyone that manages over three, the individual owners are not required to pay into that. So. Chelsea, question for you, is this gonna be included in the packet or on the website anywhere? I would like to say yes.
Yes, it'll be in the packet as a follow-up, just kind of like the recycling one included in this packet. So now that this is done, this will be included in the next packet.
And can I make a, yeah, I was gonna say, can I make a request that this goes on the short-term rental page of the website as well?
We can do that.
I think this is important for all of us.
I'm surprised that there aren't more people here to listen to this.
Well, there's an awful lot online, so that could be related.
Can you email me? Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now. Any questions? Again, all of that, thank you, Jen, May, Lonnie, city staff, and Jody for putting that together.
Good chart.
Good chart, people's chart.
Excellent.
Prettiest of charts.
Be careful, I'm gonna have to back end.
Especially the charts, okay?
Al Blumberg, oh, wait, I don't get to do that, that's, that's a miracle.
I, I, I.
Good chart though.
And as an FYI, as we get done with this presentation, we're then going to move into some conversation, they're gonna bring us up to speed on some of the work that they're doing on the zoning. But I do notice that we have a camera turned online. Mr. Blumberg, would you like to speak to council or to me and they'll listen in?
Thank you. I thought that was an excellent presentation, Chris, and a lot of information. Is there a chance that we could get a copy of that to give to each of the planning board members?
We'll, we'll get that forwarded on to planning board as well. So as we get that copy in tonight, we'll have it posted online, but we'll send it to you to distribute out as well.
Yeah, thank you. Again, well done, there's a lot of good information there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jody. Great work.
Thank you. Anything, all right. Any other comments? Jen, please.
Jen Cap, right over there. Triple A, I thought you guys all know where I live. Triple A, Red Lodge, Valdez, and Madison. Thank you for the recap, that's really interesting stuff. I think that it demonstrates that while the owner occupied are holding steady at E, so the question earlier or the comment that that category be included in the, in the limit, I really feel that at this point, it's demonstrating itself to not, it's not necessary to include in the limit. I also think that the numbers are showing us that as predicted, the market is correcting. And many of us professionals predicted that. And it's also demonstrating that I think the ordinance is doing a good job, and I like how it's been clarified and cleaned up and all the work that's gone into that, I really appreciate that. These numbers indicate that basically we're, in a way, driving people to management companies because those numbers increased and individually managed homes decreased. And I do think that will help, it'll help keep short-term rentals in that good neighbor category, that they're managed in a way that is reflecting character in neighborhoods or taking care of the neighborhood and being managed in a way that, you know, noise complaints are quickly reported to or responded to, et cetera, occupancy, parking, whatever it is. So I'm really pleased to see the numbers and to have it recapped for everybody, considering how important this was about a year ago. I'm glad to see all the people online, but I'm really surprised to see myself as an only member in the audience tonight, considering how important this was and contested and discussed. So I'm really, I'm really grateful for all the work that admin and finance has done. If, you know, I find it really helpful to attend those admin and finance meetings because that's where I get to actually have conversation with my council members and clarify things and, yeah, very helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody online who'd like to, else would like to weigh in on that? All right, let's go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, Auntie, go ahead.
Hello, Jen. I thought that was a very great presentation too. Thank you, Chelsea and Jody, did a good job, good to have those facts. And I want to clarify, maybe I misunderstood what Jen was saying, but I wasn't saying I thought that owner occupied should not be exempt, I think it should be. But my point was that the new definition, there's like, from the current ordinance to the amended ordinance that I found in the packet, there went from three types of short-term rentals to I think it was five, and three of those five were exempt. And, and the point I was trying to make too is that the owner occupied description had become broader, so it included more than what I thought would be someone who lives in town the majority of the time, works here, maybe raised their family here, they've got some extra rooms now, and they need extra help paying their property tax or finishing up their mortgage, getting the kids through college, so they wanted to rent a few rooms. I think that's a perfect owner occupied, and they should be exempt, but the broader description in the new amended, I felt like was making it too broad to try and keep it simple. I hope that makes sense.
Heard and noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just kind of a heads up as we move into this discussion on kind of cleaning up and the changes, we've had a request, and I anticipate that in the packet, next week what we'll actually do is there will be a marked up copy that kind of has, starts with the original and then shows everything that was added and done, both for the council as a whole's benefit, that hasn't been in those conversations, as well as the public who wants to track those changes. You'll be able to see the stuff that was added, changed, and removed there. So like I said, stay tuned, I don't anticipate, if I look at my crystal ball, it's a little hazy sometimes, I would guess that probably in the February timeframe is when we'll be seeing this. Hopefully toward the end of January first or February, we'll be getting the blessing of council as a whole to move it to the action portion of the agenda. Who, who from?
Hey, Dave.
Who, I see a voice, yeah, Al.
Just to be clear, if there are changes, will the planning board, zoning commission get to comment on those changes or will they go right to council?
I think, I think that's a worthy conversation. First off, the answer is anybody can always have that conversation. I, I think we can and should relay a copy of that on to planning board, or, and I, let me rephrase, I'm reading between the lines and hearing a request, can we get a copy of that updated document for discussion at, at planning board?
The reason, I'm sorry, the reason I ask is the planning board spent quite a bit of time on definitions and those types of things, and if there's an adjustment in those definitions, not that the planning board has any authority, but I think that the board as a whole would like an opportunity to look at and discuss and make comments as a board rather than as individuals.
Okay. I don't, so, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and, and that markup copy will include to, to planning board. And then my recollection is we've also had some kind of conversations on the zoning elements, which is planning board's realm, which is within which zones will we allow, but then there's also a, which will we allow it, but like, it's just conditional use, like is it a single user?
No, that was not at all any of the conversation.
No, well, this is conversations from a planning board, but then there's a legislation portion, which is in the purview of council. So like this ordinance and the fees and the registration is council's purview, not planning's purview.
Correct.
Planning's purview ends with, this isn't allowed use within this zone.
I think he's talking about attachments, it says zoning recommendations, and there was an actual change to the zoning that was recommended by the administration, the admin and finance committee is making a recommendation to the zoning board to change the definition of short-term rental. I think that's the only, I think that's the only thing. I can't really tell what this, what was changed, but that was involved, so I'm guessing that that was, that came out of the admin and finance committee, the zoning recommendation.
And certainly, if there's anything that we want, as that council wants to have the zoning board, have, have the planning board revisit as far as terms or definitions or anything else, that absolutely will go to planning board. And is that, is that, are we reading that properly, this is just stuff that, hey, we want, we want planning board to look at this?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, mayor and council members, the, the planning board and zoning commission does not want to be a road bump here. It's just that we did spend a lot of time on it, I know there's some history there, and if no other reason rather than courtesy, I would like to see the planning board review it and make a comment as a board, not as individuals.
That's fair. Noted, and we'll make sure that happens, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it would also be helpful to find out why this change, or why this, why this recommendation for a change. I know where the definition came from originally, because I was on the planning board at that time, so I know where that definition came from, and I wanted to know why the require, why the, why the recommendation to change it. And so maybe that should be like a little asterisk down here that explains why and where it came from, whether we developed it or whether it was literally a state definition or.
Sure.
Is that something where we, can, we can address at this time as far as an explanation? Because, I mean, that's the purpose of this working session, right? Is to help explain, here's, here's where we've been and, and why this is being proposed or suggested.
Yep, a hundred percent.
I got the first question, is that the only recommendation, just that one definition, or is there more in here and I just didn't, couldn't tell? So essentially, the recommendation for planning board was to remove the administrative regulations that were being put into zoning and to update the definitions to match what we have in our ordinances. Because a lot of those changes, or a lot of the things that were in zoning were saying what the process of getting a registration would look like, all of those pieces, which was redundant and also contradictory.
Okay, so I'm gonna kind of step in here a little bit in my role as keeping the move, the ZB moving. What I'm, what I'm hearing is, I'm gonna restate and tell me if I, if I got it correctly. A, because we have stuff about short-term rentals in multiple places, we want to make sure there is alignment between what we have on the administrative side and what we have in, in our zoning regulations and documents. And, and I think that makes sense, and so this is, and, and, and so, if I may, the goal is alignment. It's not, we're not dictating, here's what it shall be, this is our recommendations or our comments or suggestions, but the goal is alignment between the terms.
Yep, it's alignment.
And ultimately, planning documents will be approved by the city council as well.
So we're looking for consistency.
Consistency and alignment. So then the second part of that that I heard, and then I'll, and then Al can make a note of this and, and, and bring this up at, at the planning board as well, is if there were sections in our zoning documents that fell like they were under the administrative or legislative function, then they ought not to be spread in multiple locations. Again, we get back to the planning board's role as saying, these are the zones where this use will be permitted, but the administration and day-to-day operations of that falls to the city for administrative purposes, purposes, under the guidance and direction of the legislative body, which is the council. That, are, are we good with that?
Understand.
Summary? And, and if I may, Al, did that, oh, that, that, that works for you?
Yeah, I mean, alignment is, is important, and also, the, on our two thousand and twenty-five agendas are gonna be reviewing of the, of the zoning regulations, and so this is a perfect opportunity to make sure there's consistency and alignment and, and agreement.
All right, thank you. All right. Going back to, Chelsea, are you gonna present that?
I'm just gonna roll it through, yeah, that works for you.
Yeah, the, the changes on that.
So, and I'll, I'll kind of mish these together a little bit because that's exactly what has happened. So in ordinance number nine sixty-three, originally there was a lot of specific definitions, things around registrations, change, or basically pieces that should be handled in ordinance nine oh seven, because that is where we define how you get your city registrations for any of the businesses in town. So we felt it is more appropriate that the registration restrictions or regulations, where is the word, criteria, should live within that ordinance. So we did go through ordinance nine sixty-three and made it more specific to the limit versus the registration process, so they could be more, again, aligned, cleaned up, and consistent, and you're also not having duplication throughout several ordinances, but now you have it changed in one place but didn't in another. So really trying to simplify what that looks like and make it really easy to track, as well as make it easier for our city clerks to be able to answer questions and to be able to enforce a lot of those regulations, because that was one issue with nine sixty-three as well, is there wasn't a lot of very clear criteria of what made those qualifications for certain types, or when caps were, or when the limits were hit, what that looked like. So this was to try and clean it up for our city clerks to be able to do their job. So in ordinance nine sixty-three, we really did take out a lot of pieces, but they just got relocated into nine oh seven. Specifically, and I'll pull up both of them just so I can have that frame of reference as well. And honestly, also in nine oh seven, it didn't originally have a lot of the short-term rental lodging, any of this information. So this all got created based around nine sixty-three, as well as stuff that we found within the zoning code, trying to keep it all in its proper locations. So, bear with me.
Did, did, did we have a copy of nine oh seven that maybe just missing a cover page?
It's missing a cover page because we didn't put the entirety of nine oh seven into it.
It's, it's the code that.
Correct. It was literally just chapter two.
This is the municipal code, chapter two.
Yep.
Okay. So maybe when we do the, the marked up with the changes on those two, we can include some sort of cover that says this is, so nine oh seven is basically what, nine oh seven will update and say, chapter two will now read like this.
Correct, yep. Well, nine oh seven is actually like the full registration ordinance. So I'm gonna pull up the red line, just so I can say specifically what was removed. So we did make edits, and actually, I could even share my screen on this if you guys still have mine, yeah. So. Okay. So, technology is fantastic, huh? So this is ordinance, there's some formatting changes because I'm a little bit.
Can you make it about three sizes bigger? Can you make it about three sizes bigger for those of us with old eyes?
Bear with me. Is that good, you guys?
Yeah, thanks, that helps. And then just scroll up a little bit, so, yeah.
All right. So, a lot of the whereses remain the same. And then, again, change some of these to just be a little bit more consistent.
And for those in the audience who may not have heard, this, this markup showing the strikes and changes will be in the packet next time.
Correct. So, again, essentially, in section one, we just struck all of section one, 'cause it was specific to registration licenses, or registrations, as well as you removing licensing across the board, because it did change from a license to a registration. So, that is now included in 907. Section, what was two and is now one, talks about our good neighbor policy, which is something that we now have in place. We got that codified and approved, what was that, our last council meeting?
Yep.
And section three, again, was stricken, just because that did, again, go into ordinance 907.
And the good neighbor policy was passed separately, so it's not in 963 or 907.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
It can be updated.
Yep.
Okay. So, they're not required to?
They are required to, that's what this says.
And ordinance requires...
This ordinance requires them to do the good neighbor policy, which is pass via resolution, so it can be updated more easily over the years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why it's here.
So, 907 is the one that reads, that refers to the good neighbor policy?
No, right here, 9, 963 refers to the good neighbor policy? And that's where it makes it require that the property owners have it in their property or have it available to, to the guests. And then, the resolution is what changes that good neighbor policy, so we can adapt it over time.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay, so then, section three, that was stricken, again, that goes into registrations specifically. And a lot of that was actually around grandfathering as well, referring back to June 30th of 2023, so the information, the grandfathering was no longer relevant. Essentially, it said that if you had a short-term rental, you wouldn't lose your cap position when that went into place. So, yeah, that is now no longer relevant, so it got removed. The new section two, this is where it establishes the limits of FTRs permitted within city limits, and what that calculation is, and then also where we get the information for that calculation. I do think that there was a good comment by Sandy today, where we should evaluate how that limit will be calculated and that timeline, because there has been issues, obviously, since we did the report today, and that we have to wait for registrations to come in at the beginning of July, and sometimes we don't have all the registrations in until September, to actually be able to figure out what that total number is for the year. And again, we're reliant on other bodies to provide that information. So, there has been conversation about changing when that annual review of the limit will be, when that will be. And again, I am totally open to that being in, in September.
Is, or do we change the wording that says the request will be made in June, and then staff just automatically works with the latest and best information? So, if we make the request in June and we don't get the numbers until September, then we're still working on last year's numbers?
It could even be too, that we get the total dwellings in June, and then we figure out our percentages throughout the full year. And, 'cause that's how it should be, and it's how it is though.
But, like I said, if we make the request in June and they don't get it to us till September, if, if, if the, the ordinance states that we'll initiate or we'll make the request in June, now we're not saying, because the, I think part of the frustration of, of we didn't get it until September, but that's something outside of our control.
Right.
But we can, so the ordinance should probably address the things we can control. So, we will make the request, if the request is in June, and then when we get that updated information, we will then use the latest and best information in our ongoing calculations.
Perfect.
Does it, does that make sense? Councilmember Keith?
I just noticed, maybe I'm missing it, but in the, in the resolution to adopt a good neighbor policy, one of the wheres does say, Red Lodge ordinance 963, states the city shall adopt, adopt a written good neighbor policy. Where is that? I'm...
That's in section one, two, it's there, 'cause we were just reading that.
It's section one.
Section one, why?
So, if you look up here, unless, then we...
I'm, I'm just looking at the one that's in the packet.
Okay.
So...
I only got one.
I know.
I only got one monitor right now.
There's all those things floating around, so...
Bear with me.
Section one.
Yeah. Now, therefore, being acted that the city of, the city shall adopt a written good neighbor policy.
Okay, so, in the, just to point out, in the packet, number one does not, that is not in there.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah.
Oh, then we have the wrong one in the packet.
We might have the wrong one, I just wanna, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, it was a lot of...
That's probably basically very difficult. Where, Mr. Mayor, perhaps we should wait till we get the markup copy?
Well, I, I, I'm okay with that, what I, what I...
We have the wrong one already. We've done this before in planning, not having the correct one, and then we spin wheels trying to fix something. It's very confusing.
Did Dennis change it? Because he had mentioned something about the good neighbor policy not needing it.
No, what he, what he did, he changed the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the resolution number, but the good neighbor policy, the resolution to adopt a good neighbor policy, he took out all of the stuff that is in the good neighbor policy and said, that's not necessary. We just need the whereas, the whereas, and the now therefore, to be resolved, and not all the information that's on that piece.
The reference to it, but on...
I, I, I think, so, so my thinking is that we're not, I said, we're not taking action on it. I think I am okay and would like to have you continue presenting, but I welcome the, that, that the observation of where is it?
Yeah, no.
And that it's not in here, because, and, and, and again, I think it, it'll benefit if we have the markup copies...
Oh, absolutely.
Going forward, so...
Okay. Thank you for... So, mostly, I just wanna make this a visual piece for folks to see, that this does, in fact, go into 907. And there have been some changes, so I'll show the copy that I have.
'Cause, 'cause the one that's on here is the one that has the date of 11/12 on it.
That sounds bizarre, because that's literally the one that I have in mine.
No, it didn't change the...
The bottom line?
So, is it my understanding that for short-term rentals, we have 907, ordinance 907, ordinance 963, and a resolution for the good neighbor policy? And so, that's everything within the city regarding short-term rentals.
Other than the zoning, which says which zones it can be in?
Outside of zoning. I'm just talking about ordinances. Why do, why do we not have 963 and 907 as one ordinance, rather than have someone have to go to multiple ordinances? Is it 'cause we had planned to change one, or...
I, I think one of them, 907 sets the municipal code.
Yeah.
And then...
And it talks about all business registrations, not just short-term.
Yeah.
So, we're just looking at that piece.
Ah, yeah, okay.
There we go. And then number one, or, and then 963 is the one where it says a limit for the amount availables.
So, 907 is business registration.
Yep.
Part of which includes...
Period.
Yep. Section two, or, chapter two.
Chapter two.
Yep, chapter two.
Does, does that answer the question as far as the need for two ordinances?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it started to get crazy to have...
It's a lot. There's part of the reason that we didn't spend out...
We're trying to condense it down, but, but it still can't be a sentence.
But it has to be.
Yep. And there's, this is also part of the reason we didn't wanna have a bunch of edited copies, copies running around for this exact reason, for the same, like, literally sent one copy and it's missing a section. And it could be from, 'cause there's been a lot of work sessions done on this.
And, and that's recognized and appreciated, and I like that. But I said, I think we're also, as, as we bring things to council, and, and we're trying to bring the rest of the council up to, here's what we talked about in decision X and Y and Z. I know when I was on council, that was one of my, help me understand how we got, where we are and how we got there.
Yeah, how we got from point A to point B.
Mm-hmm. Chelsea's doing a good job.
Sorry.
No, no.
It's a lot.
I couldn't, I'm not helping it right now.
Councilmember Keith?
So, again, apologies, I know that this is a lot.
All right. Do you wanna reshare your screen?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up, so, I basically just went through 963 and just tried to show everything that was being removed. And then it really just breaks it down to saying how the cap is, or the limit is calculated and how that's being monitored annually. So, that's what it...
Is a big simplification.
Big simplification. Then we have the 907 changes for chapter two, and this I will share. I don't have the red line right here, let me look one more space. I have a couple of different folders going for this one. But I appreciate everyone's patience. I know this is very exciting.
That's okay, Douglas is gonna fill in the space with a joke.
Yeah.
She are, she are relieved, Doug.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna fall off.
Don't fall off, make us.
Yeah, one of the two.
Well, because most, all of this is brand new, I think I'm just gonna show the proposed changes, 'cause again, most of this did not exist before, so... Those changes. Okay. So, going into this one, it, again...
Make it, the municipal... I have 60-year-old eyes.
I think that should do it.
Really 59, dude.
So, again, this goes, we're actually chapter three, right here, introduction and purpose. Again, the purpose of this chapter is to establish procedure for reviewing and approving short-term rental business registrations, and ensure adherence to ordinance 963, so they do...
And this, this does align with what we have in the packet, for this part?
Yeah. So, the short-term rental, again, it does the definition of what that is. That did change slightly from the original. Basically, there was some issues with some of our definitions, specifically one in property management, where it says that the property manager pays all the taxes for the owners, which is not true, they pay the city taxes, yes, but not paying their property taxes.
Reserve taxes, but not property taxes.
Yeah, exactly.
And where did you get the definition for the short-term rental?
So, we actually took a large portion of it from the zoning and just made slight modification to it.
Which is why there's a separate document. Let's see, the zoning got it from the state.
Which, that's part of the reason that we took it from you guys and made it a little bit more specific.
So, and so again, as we bring this here, what we wanna do is compare for consistency and...
But yes, this did come from zoning. If we did change something, it was very, very minor. And I think it was specifically language around compensation to make it more consistent with how we use that definition in other places. 'Cause I think it was for, for money, and it, it doesn't necessarily have to be for money, it could be for trade, there's, there's often different ways that that works.
And, and again, going back to the, the main purpose of this at a, at a, at a work session level, is to compare and check and make sure the direction of whichever committee we've assigned initiative X to gets to check in with the council. And the council can say, yep, you're going the way that I was thinking, or wait a minute, if you want me on board, I need to understand this, or, or we need to make that change.
It doesn't look like they're the same, unless I'm not in the same spot.
Where are you?
And three, two, three dash two, dash, dash, two, definitely.
And then general, short-term?
And so, I have the old one, 'cause it's under A, general short-term rental, and then like section two, I have properties available for rent, for rental and for owner use at any time of year.
Can you go to your Roman number two? Roman number two, the property?
I don't, I don't think she's talking about this, I think she's talking about this.
Nope, nope, nope. I'm reading right here, short-term rental, A, Roman number two, property is available for rental and/or owner.
Yeah. Rental and/or owner.
The packet isn't the same as what you, yeah, are on.
Bear with, bear with you guys. Why would I stop making sure?
No, you're good. I'm sure it's crazy.
I feel you, that happened last, last week too, we had the wrong one in there. Yeah, this is, that's a little...
Frustrating, so apologies.
Do we, do we wanna table this and, and pick this up next time?
Yeah, no, I'd rather have accurate copies in the packet.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm like reading, I'm like, there's nothing about it at all seen here. I don't see the highlight.
Yeah.
So...
But, yeah.
And then you, are we, are we good?
Yeah, we're great.
So, are the, let me, let me ask you a question.
I think the main thing is...
Documentation aside, yeah, let's, from, from the high point, what are, what are the things we wanna make sure we get a council consensus on, this is the direction we're going, and is council on board?
Right, so the biggest thing that we'd like council consensus, consensus on is making sure that we are comfortable with having ordinance 963 specifically be around the limit and ordinance 907 being specifically around registration.
Okay, let's stop for a minute. Anybody have any concerns with that?
No.
We good with that?
I'm good, I feel like there's a lot that it needs separation, I'm good.
Okay, next?
That's it. If I don't have accurate documents, but I don't wanna leave anyone else behind.
No, no, that's all right. So then, the other one is that there's some terminology, we wanna get terminology consistent between our zoning documents and our administrative documents.
Mm, which we covered.
There's, there's also an effort to make sure that the administration portions are not part of our zoning documents.
Correct, which we covered, yes.
And, and everybody's good with that as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that kind of the, is that the 50,000-foot stuff?
Yep, that's it. And I will send everything that I have to Lonnie today, so, it gets in the packet. I'm not sure how that happened, I apologize. That is likely on me.
That's all right.
True.
First objective in any crisis is to firmly establish blame, then you can get around to solving the problem.
But I did.
If you would CC me on those, I will make sure that we get those to planning also. Thank you very much for your efforts. Any other questions for admin and finance from the rest of council? Okay. Hearing that, are we good on admin and finance? All right, let's move to land use and planning and, Council Chair, Stupin, are you ready to do that, or do you want me to skip over for a minute and go to...
No, we're good.
Okay.
So, again, we didn't really have any action items at this point. We are having discussions of gathering information about the airport business that Dave did talk about already in mayor's comments, so that will be an ongoing conversation. And then also, just getting our, our updates from Sandy around the master plan and the growth policy, definitely encourage folks to be involved in that, because it does affect our community for years to come, so... That's it. That one's short and sweet.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then, we will go to public works, and I don't know who to go to for the updates on this.
I can give you that.
Councilmember Keith?
Before Chelsea's talking up. So, a lot of the stuff that, yeah, our, the, we have very short meetings tonight, and a lot of the stuff, we talked about, Dave already mentioned, the MDOT, MDE, storm drain inlet. One of the things that Mike McCall said is that the grant applications for the Phase Two and Three wastewater project ranks number nine and number 17, and both of the rankings are well above the recommended funding cutoff. So, he says that's a soft yes for both of those, so that's really good news. Applications for underwater, the applications have been submitted for the combined funding for the 16-inch bypass and the 2023 water rehabilitation, rehabilitation products, projects, sorry. So, that is moving ahead. Dave already talked about the snow party on Broadway and the fixing of the lights. Under parks, there's some, a couple of grant applications, the DNRC, for some pruning, tree removal, tree planting, things like that, that came out of our 2017 tree survey. And so, there's some money that will likely come our way for tree updating. And then, we also had, oh, the pickleball, and tennis people are interested in starting an advisory committee, similar to what the pool did, to help with fundraising. They are meeting with Al Blumer, who was involved with the pool, and at some point, we'll need to create a resolution, or to, to pass a resolution to create that committee at some point in the future. And then, we had a visitor, Kate Belinda, who is the high school green team advisor. She and her team of students have been monitoring the stream and some of the things that are in there, like E. coli and nitrates are off the charts, and so... And so she has, um, she's gonna coordinate with Mike Maples, um, about a plan forward to getting some community development about storm runoff because it's no longer being treated, now it's going right into Rock Creek. And so, um, there's some ways that we can, as a community, deal with that proactively.
And, and where did they, uh, take the study, where, where did they take the samples?
They're doing the samples right where the, where all of the runoff goes into Rock Creek, right below that downstream.
Kind of adjacent to the high school, maybe just a little bit north.
So before it, it joins the rest of the water and, and disseminates.
And, and actually, I think some, I think some, from, from, I know there's been studies done from the creeks as well. Um, just by way of information, um, there has been some identification and studies, um, I'm sure everybody's aware of the, the water feature we had earlier this year with the, the land mine, with the, the old mine situation. Um, one of the things that was really interesting is when they were pulling that water out in the early days, um, that was stuff that was completely off the charts too.
Oh, I had never.
And so there's a, there's a bunch of stuff there. I think, I think there.
That might be contributing to.
I, I, I'm, absolutely, because how many gallons per minute are we getting out of there that's going in?
Hundred gallons per minute.
At a hundred gallons per minute, and that, so, so I think what is, what has happened is there's been some, some points identified and some trends and stuff, um, that we are seeking to understand better. Um, and I think a lot of them are happening prior to red lodge proper, whether this be up the hill and coming down or upstream. Um, so, so it's just, it's, in, 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 in the continual monitoring, some of which are curiosity and science and training, there's things that make you go hmm, and so now we've gone hmm, and so the next step is to, is to dig a little bit deeper and find out that information.
Yes, because we should go a little bit further south and find out what Rock Creek is bringing to us.
Yeah.
And then we should actually go further north and see where, like, by the time it hits, um, maybe Fox, see what the numbers are.
Yeah, and so, so there's, there's been some, some observation points that have raised some questions, and our public works director is aware of them. And, uh, we're working not only just with them, but also with, with D E Q and the mine. So, so I think, like I said, there's, there's, there are things that make you go hmm that require additional studying and some research.
And I know that the city does do water tests of our tap water, and maybe they could go ahead and pull some samples out north and south as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
While, while they're running it down.
And, and, and all of our, our water samples are, are still fine, we've not had any issues or concerns.
As long as I can't smell it, I'm happy.
As, as, as long as we don't get nasty grabs from D E Q, I'm happy, so.
So, um, yeah, that's it, and yay for community science.
Yay.
It was really nice to have her, um, talking about her green team and what they've been doing, having it super cool.
She's good, she's real good.
That's great.
Those young ones in the right direction.
Yeah.
All right, is any other questions for public works committee from the rest of council? All right, um, correspondence, um, I'll just call out that the recycling presentation from last time is, was in the packet, for those that are interested, as the S T R presentation will be in, in the next packet. Was there any other correspondence, um, that folks are aware that they want to bring to council's attention?
Do you want to point out, the letters that we've got recommend for people that, uh, would like to sit on the park board? Because we did get a letter for the park board.
Those, those, that was actually just a, a reappointment, so those will be in January.
Okay.
So, 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 yeah, so I will include those, and there was also two for cemetery that will be in the packet, but they'll be in the packet where the action is taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, there's one that, um, sent it forward to, uh, about the nitrates at Rock Creek, which might be a good, I mean, I don't, maybe we could include some of this in there as well.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
No, I.
Do you want this copy?
Please.
Want to pack that up?
This is what, um, Ms. Wonder brought, and the irony is I got the email as I was, as, as, here, discussing.
Level.
And I, I think if you, if you afford a copy of that to, were you, were you giving that to Sandy or for, or handing it down to, um, Lonnie for the packet?
Um, Eric.
I, 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 I scribbled, I scribbled on mine, but we can.
Not all from her, she, a lot of it, yeah.
And this was from the teacher?
Yeah, she, she just, well, yeah, from, she, she printed it from the E P A.
It's from the E P A, yeah, she did it together.
Would you please hand this down to the city clerk and we'll just include that in the packet next time for way of information? Do you have the electronic of it?
Yeah, I have the electronic.
Yeah.
She sent me the electronic.
Okay, so if you'll forward the electronic to, to, to Lonnie as well as the letter, then we'll include those in the, in the packet next time.
Did everybody get a copy of that letter? I imported, I forwarded it to half of you.
And, and it'll, and it'll be available in the packet next time so everybody gets it, we don't create an electronic quorum.
Yep.
So, yeah, make sure you're not, we don't do a replant discussion, so. All right, anything else from the correspondence? Um, all right, um, we are to a public comment period. I'm gonna start out and say, did we get a chance to get what you wanted to do, or do you wanna?
No, I'm good, good mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have the table validating that I have accurately panned the room and have not gotten a response. All right, um, thank you for those online, uh, any, anybody who'd like to speak, uh, on anything within the city purview on the agenda or otherwise, uh, now is your opportunity to do so. If you could turn on your camera, that would indicate you wanted to speak. And if that's not an option, coming off mute will work and I'll try to read the mute buttons, they're just not as big as the pictures. Angie, you have the floor.
Me again. The thing I'm curious about, and I know this isn't a question and answer, but what I was hoping would be presented, and maybe Chelsea, when you get your presentation reorganized and do it again, it will show up. But when I went to the city's website and looked up the current nine-three-six ordinance, it had three types of short-term rentals and their definitions. In the amended nine-three-six, it has five types of short-term rentals. And I believe it was three of which are exempt. Um, I was just curious how that changed and where the new ones came from. So maybe that will be in next week's presentation.
Okay, so we, yeah, so we'll, we'll flag that to make sure we, we discuss. I do think part of it I can, I can speak to, but, but we can address it at, and in a future meeting, is I think that the, the assumption was the basis of imposing a limit was to, to ensure that we weren't negatively impacting the community as a whole. And so part of it was, if somebody rents out their place for one week once a year, is that impacting the character of the community? And so I think that's part of that discussion, but we'll make a note to make sure to include that in the conversation if I, if I heard the, and captured the, the question properly.
Can I just say one thing?
No.
Number two, the floor.
Uh, Angie, yes, I, we will absolutely address that when we have the proper, when the, the same documents are what we have for everybody. Uh, because I think it's only fair that the folks playing along at home also can read through that, and we'll explain why that there were five definitions versus three. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any of those questions outside of council as well, where I'm a little less, where I'm a little more organized, um, which is unfortunate, and again, sincere apologies to all.
Nope, no worries there. So we'll, we'll flag that as a, as a question to make sure we dig deeper into a future presentation. Anything else, Angie?
Uh, no, I think that's it. I just didn't feel like my comments were being understood, so, but I think they are now.
No.
That's all right. Um, did at least one of those introductions, did you include an address in general for records?
Three oh one South.
Three one South Hagan.
Perfect, thank you, all right. Any other comments from the public? All right, um, I'll go ahead and close the, the public comment period then. Um, and, and as we wrap things up, I, again, I want to say thank you to Chris and, and to the council as a whole. Um, I feel we've gotten a lot of really good things done this year. Our, our parks are in the best shape they've been in, in a very long time, um.
Our streets, our sidewalks.
Things are really coming, moving together.
Um, on Broadway, um, I'm looking forward to being able to, to present a number of what, how much our water use from our tanks has decreased as we've identified and, and, and resolved water issues. Um, the sanitary is no longer being treated by, by our sewer. Um, we've completed the Rocky Fork acquisition, we've got the sidewalks, the sidewalk leveling is not done, but absolutely, I got, got lots of feedback from over stroll that people noticed that. Um, we're making some headway on our, our trash, which gives us the ability to, to, to negotiate some options, um, next year and kind of look at, you know, is, is curbside recycling. One of the things that was interesting in Europe is they, they have colored bags. And so you have the bags inside the house, but then they all go into the bin, um, and then they get done. So I don't know if, if that's something that, that Republic has, but, but there's certainly ideas that we can, we can take up with them now that, that we're not options at the beginning of the year. Um, council meetings have been a joy, I appreciate and welcome, um, everybody's efforts to help keep these. Um, we can, we can have disagreements and discussions and, and, and that's wonderful, so, thank you. Um, stay tuned, there's still a lot of stuff coming. We've got, uh, the Brewery Hill project, we've got the Rocky Fork demolition. Um, we're still in active pursuits of, of getting the eagle's nest. Uh, the sixteen-inch bypass that we're working on, which has been a problem for water pressure for years, is on the agenda. Um, we've got some changes coming up on sewer to, to make sure we're not, people don't have to invest in an extra water meter in order to not be paying sewer on, on stuff their water runs with. Um, so, so like I said, I think it's, I, I look back at what we've got done this year and, and I feel a, a good sense of, of, of pride, and I hope as you are leaving us, that, that you recognize and, 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 and feel some pride in playing a very integral part in, in all of those things.
And, and if I could just also say, Dave, that your leadership has been really good and, um, you've been very inclusive and, um, I really appreciate that, it's been really nice to have you as our mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and that, at the same time, I welcome opportunities for improvement and, and feedback, um, and always. I try, I try to do my best to incorporate those, I don't know if it succeeds, but I, I too am human, so. All right, um, any other last comments before we move on to item number thirteen?
I, I thought it was interesting, I was looking at the revitalization plan, the old revitalization plan, and it had a lot of graphics of the downtown and ways it could be brought back. And, um, it was interesting, and the problem way back during that revitalization plan was parking for downtown. So I keep thinking eagle town, great parking lot.
Okay.
I can make the great park.
Other, other comments? All right, I will entertain a motion for item thirteen, Doug.
Out of here.
I'm, I'm adjourned.
Leading adjourned, thank you to all who joined and stayed.